Our first question that we have here for you, Professor Noreen, could you explain why you personally feel that diversity and inclusion is important? And how you ensure diversity and inclusion are implemented within the workplace? Or even within your everyday life? And feel free to speak about your experiences as a member of the BIPOC community.
Yeah, that's a fantastic question. So thank you to whomever asked that. Uh, so diversity is strength. That, that, that's, that's, that's the, the, the number one priority or, or credo motto for me. Uh, and it should be for a lot of people, but unfortunately, some people don't see that. The thing is, we need to remember that the reason why diversity is so important is not just because we want to have every color of the rainbow, every, you know, person from every walk of life, just because. It's because of the various different perspectives that makes us stronger as a sport organization. When we have a homogeneous group of the same person, and I'm not trying to pick on anyone here, but I am going to be a little bit more blunt with this. When we've got a bunch of stale male pale, um, you know, a bunch of old white guys who think they know everything about everything, you know, the sport organization could proceed, but it's not going to be as complete or as efficient or as, uh, ability to grow. It because it's essentially got group think. Everyone is thinking the same. And for a long, long, long period of time in the sport industry, we thought that was the way it needed to be. Because the people in power wanted to have people who prop them up. We, they had, we had a bunch of yes men and emphasis on men. So now, we are now starting to realize that, you know what? It's not just about going to get a four-year degree and then entering in and trying to be a carbon copy of what we seen from the seventies, eighties and nineties. Because that is not going to allow the business to grow. For those of you who've had me in SPIMA 3P25, you know, Ethan, Evan, Brooklyn, you know, the one lecture that I really speak to or that really encompasses this is the death of, of sponsorship and the rise of partnerships. Maple Esports Entertainment, for those of you who haven't had class with me, realize that, oh my gosh, we are maxed out. We've got all these sponsorships and the teams are doing decent. You know, the Raptors are winning the championship, Leafs are making the playoffs, Toronto FC is winning the championship. Uh, you know, the nine oh five doing well, Marley's winning the championship, but we can't grow. And it, it, they, they came to that realization that, you know what? We have to think differently. And you unfortunately cannot think differently if you do not have diversity. You know, in, in my personal experience, as, as a, obviously as a member of the BIPOC community, you know, I, I encountered this, that people didn't think that I offered anything differently. At the very beginning, they were just looking for someone to confirm what they already knew. That this was the existing way to do things and we're just going to keep perpetuating that cycle. And it's just going to go on and on and on. But again, now we're in 2021 where it's about growing the business because it's so competitive. And that has fortunately created the situation where diverse perspectives, whether it's gender, race, sexual orientation, and, and all the various different variables are certainly helping to assist for organizations to grow. And so it is a good thing. It, we want to have good conflict. We want good trouble. We don't want to have differing perspectives for the sake of, okay, well, now we're going to have people who don't think alike, so they're naturally going to combat heads. It's not about that. It's about how can we challenge ourselves to be better, right? If someone's got an idea, that's great. Let's put them all in a hat. Let's get other ideas as well during that idea generation stage. Those are all good things. And so, um, diversity is super important, not just because, again, it's not because we need to check a box. Or we need to, okay, we need to get every color of the rainbow just because. It actually, the business case for this is quite clear that we can only grow if we have various different perspectives. Because if you get 10 people in a room who all think the same, there's only so many ideas you'll be able to come up with. But if you've got, if you get 10 people in the room, three of whom who think the same, but seven who have unique differing perspectives, that's super important to grow the business. Um, so yeah, that's a long one, maybe a five-minute answer to a very short question. But, um, you know, diversity is super important, diversity is strength. Um, and we're only going to see this continue to grow. So for those organizations that, um, you know, have not embraced diversity, you're going to see that they're going to fall the way of the dinosaur. They're going to go extinct because at this rate, with increased immigration, with increased globalization, with increased, uh, demands by the consumer for diversity, the business case is quite clear. Um, and, and so, you know, for me personally, it's, you, you, no one's ever given me a job because they said, oh, you were the brown guy. Okay, so I want to make that very clear as well. You know, I, I got every single job based off the merits. But it's also, I got the jobs that I did because I brought a different perspective to the table. I was a poor inner-city kid who grew up in Toronto from a single parent home. As, and that's the story that I was able to help sell, that that perspective is different from someone who came from a higher-class background, who grew up in Oakville with a 3,000-square-foot home, played hockey his whole life, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Every, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but the differing perspectives can make us better. So when you're in the sport industry, it's not an us versus them conversation, okay? It's, we are collective, we are a team, how can we grow together? And it's that kind of thinking that will allow our business to develop to the place that we want it to grow and not be stagnant like it was in the eighties and nineties. But yeah, great question.
Sorry, it was on mute, I was gonna talk. Um, but anyway, thank you so much for that explanation. I know you said it was long, but I think it's important that we do talk about it. Um, and it's true, like you were saying, diversity enhances the organization as a whole. And Madam and I actually just had an interview with a SPIMA alumna, Shauna Bacall, yesterday, the, the other day. And we were talking about this exact thing. Um, are we going to tick the box just because? Then it makes you feel better at night? Or are we going to do this because we know it's enhancing the organization as a whole? And I think that point leads into, um, genuine allyship, where are we taking the box? Because is it performative or do we actually mean it and want to enhance the organization as a whole? And like you said, having this different perspectives is what we want. We want debates, we want different opinions. Because if everyone's the same, like you said, leads into group think. And realistically, how can we move forward? So I appreciate your comments there, it's very true, I agree with you 100%. Um, this next question is, what is your best advice to give someone who wants to start their career in sport marketing? Um, but also, are there any online courses you would recommend that give certifications in marketing?
Yeah, and so, and another solid question there. So one of the things to think about, uh, on the sport marketing side of things. So again, you know, when we talk about business development, you know, sport marketing is that foundation, sports sponsorship and, and, and sales, ticket sales, uh, whatever Dr. Hyatt's teaching these days, advanced sport marketing, and then innovation entrepreneurship at that high end of the pyramid. Uh, get, so getting a job in sport marketing is very broad, right? There's different levels to that. So you could be in ticket sales, as I mentioned, you could be in sponsorships, you could be just a straight-up marketer, uh, sort of like a generalist. Um, and then you can certainly be on the innovation side of the industry as well, which is still connected to marketing. One of the, you know, I actually had a conversation with a student, um, maybe a couple of weeks ago, who asked me something similar. And I suggested to work backwards. You know, one of the things that SPIMA students often do is they try to look, uh, you know, forwards, like what's my future going to look like? And specifically, what's the next three to four months? I'm, I'm going to graduate in, uh, let, you know, let's say April, uh, or sorry, June convocation, whatever. And then it's like, okay, now what do I do? And they're thinking like, okay, three months, two months, one month from now, very short-term horizon. The problem with that is you're doing things ad hoc, you're doing things randomly and sporadic, and there's no rhyme or reason. And I hope to God that you, you'd taken a class with me and I would have drilled this into your head, that we do things with purpose, with intention, with strategy. Everything is about a systematic process, right? And so if you think that way, instead of like, okay, I gotta apply here, I gotta apply there. Think seven years from now. What's Brooklyn Grove's going to be doing seven years from now? What is the optimal job for her? Where does she see herself seven years from now? And then work yourself backwards, okay? Now, what do I mean by that? Well, let's say seven years from now, you see yourself as an example, as the senior partnerships officer for the Ottawa Senators, senior partnerships developer, a development officer or coordinator, we'll call, we'll call it a coordinator. Okay, let's work backwards now. Let's go on LinkedIn, let's do some creeping. Let's see who's in that role right now. Let's see what they've done and with their experiences. Let's build a genuine, authentic relationship. I'm so glad that you brought that up, Brooklyn, because, you know, when we talk about the performative versus the genuine allyship, uh, with respect to DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, that also exists for everything else literally in SPIMA. So it's not just a DEI thing, although that's obviously a very important piece. I, if there's one thing you take away from me from this call, if you need to be more genuine, in the same way that we are now expecting the Nikes of the world to stand for something, to have values. And I'm, oh, I'm not going to support Barstool because of this, or I'm going to buy Nike shirts because of this. We as consumers are now actively wanting brands to, to step up and have, uh, you know, demonstrate their values. Will you also, as an individual, need to step up and be more authentic with what you're doing? Have purpose, have intention. It's not, okay, I'm doing this because, okay, I'm going to go about this. So it's trying to do the step-by-step systematic approach. So that would be my very first thing to that person who asked that question is, look seven years from now, what's the story that you would like to tell yourself now, seven years from now? What would you, what would you have wanted to tell yourself then? And, and what tools would you have wanted to get? What network capabilities, what conferences would you have wanted to go to? What experiences would you want, would have wanted to have? And you could do so with a little bit of creeping and things like that. Now, the second part of the question is super important as well because it also connects, as I'm talking about being more authentic and being more involved, it's not just your four-year degree here at SPIMA. Now, this is going to be probably the most controversial thing I'll say tonight. But the way in which SPIMA is being taught is also the same way it was taught 15 years ago, okay? So there is a problem with that. Now, we're obviously working on it and, you know, I came onto the team last year, January of 2020. Um, and, you know, others have slowly started to trickle in. But you can look around and, and across Southern Ontario and even across this country, sport management's being taught the exact same way that it has been for the past 20 years. You're getting literally the same education as Kyle Dugess, as Aaron Matheny, as, uh, any of the other alum, alumna or alumni, uh, for that matter. So that's a pro, but it's also a massive con because the sport industry has drastically changed. And one of the things that I am very preachy about, as many of you know, is being able to do the self-independent directed work. You have to be able to go out and do the little things on your own. And you know, s- listen, I, I, I make no mistake about this. I know some students love me and some students hate me. But the ones that hate me, hate me because I'm literally doing what they're going to expect at the next level. You're going to be challenged, you're not going to be given the roadmap to get the job done. Your boss is going to be like, I want you to go do this as a sport marketer to, to, to make this directly about the question. I need you to go do this. And you're going to be like, I've never done that before. I didn't learn that in SPIMA. I, I never did that, I, I did a sport marketing plan. You're not asking me to do a sport marketing plan, you're asking me to do something else. Okay, well, please teach me, like, you know, this, this is a learning thing, right? I'm, I'm, I just started this job three months ago, four months ago. And they're going to say, don't worry, you'll be fine, figure it out. This is verbatim a story from one of my, my good friends, um, whose name is now, uh, I'm, I'm mistaking. But she works for, uh, the Pagola Sports and Entertainment, uh, team in, and I, we have a guest lecture for her in 2P652, I'm going to hate myself. Uh, but her name is escaping me right now. But point of the story is, uh, Michaela. Anyways, so Michaela says, uh, you know what? I entered this job for Pagola, uh, so the Buffalo Sabres and, and the Rochester Knights Hawks. And her boss was like, I need you to do a sport marketing, uh, activation next week for this, for this company. And she's like, uh, do you want to look it over? Do you, can we meet about this multiple times? Oh, no, 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 it'll be fine, don't worry, I trust you. That's what you're going to experience at the next level. So to go, again, back directly to the question, it says, what types of courses or what sorts of things should you be doing now to upscale yourself, to be, become the best sport marketer you can be? Right now, you need all be sponges. You need to soak up as much as possible. Now, it sucks because Brock had a LinkedIn Learning, um, past, which we, I don't think we have anymore. But if some of you are willing to invest into your futures, I would strongly recommend LinkedIn Learning. Uh, and I think you can get access to LinkedIn Learning if you have a premium account on LinkedIn. Um, there are a bunch of courses and certificates that when you complete them on LinkedIn Learning, they automatically get uploaded to your LinkedIn profile. So if right now, if many of you who have added me on LinkedIn, if you go to my LinkedIn profile and you scroll down under certification, you'll see a bunch of random stuff. Digital marketing, a search engine optimization certificate, blah, 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 blah. Because I did the exact same thing. I said, you know what? Let, let me see if this will work for the next generation of students, but you folks, the ones listening to this right now. And it, and it's true, it will work. It will give you the initial introductory background into things like search engine optimization, Google Analytics, Facebook Analytics, Instagram, well, I mean, Instagram and Facebook are the same, but so Facebook Analytics, uh, even Twitter Analytics, other things. If you want to upscale yourself in content creation, in graphic design, in, uh, digital marketing, these are all the little tips and tricks. And rightly or wrongly so, everyone listening to this synchronously or asynchronously will be expected to be experts in social. You'll be expected to be experts in digital. And again, it's a little bit unfortunate because the reason why is because you're younger. And the old stale male pales don't want to learn that stuff. And so, upskilling yourself into how to do a social media strategy from scratch, just because you've got a, you know, a fire IG account doesn't mean jack to the sport industry. Because running your IG is completely different than running a brand's voice. Your voice and a brand's voice, completely different. So start to upscale yourself. But again, what is the story you're trying to tell? Don't just do a bunch of random, general stuff. Start to pick a lane and go down that path. The last thing I want to say on this question is, you know, I know, you know, obviously, I, I know fair good people in the industry, both in Canada, the United States and, and Australia, amongst other places. But the best people in SPIMA in the industry are known for something, right? Right now, if there was a job opening in a particular area, people already know who to go to. They're going to tap into their networks and be like, is so-and-so willing to leave their job? I want to get so-and-so, I want her, I want him. That's the kind of conversations that take place. You need to start thinking about how can you be the best version of yourself? So when you ask me the question, how do I become a good sport marketer? The question is, what kind of sport marketer do you want to be? Because there's so many different types. Do you want to be a social brand manager? Do you want to be a partnerships person? Do you want to be an innovator? These are, you know, these, a, a participation manager with respect to marketing new participatory programs. So many different ways to slice this cake. But you have to choose the piece of the pie that you like, and then you can start to eat.
Um, thank you for that answer. Um, I think it was definitely great advice for all students and not just those interested in specifically going into marketing as well. Um, especially, you know, expanding on your knowledge and always learning and being that sponge and soaking things up, you know, learning for yourself and differentiating yourself amongst your peers and amongst others. So that's definitely great, um, for all of us. Um, this next question I'm excited about because I don't know too much about this topic. Um, so it is, what is your take on the growth in the esports industry? And what opportunities lie there for SPIMA students?
Yeah, I, I get another fantastic question. I, I, I'm, I'm a little bit, well, I'm, I'm obviously an open book, but we're going to be talking about this in 4P10 in, in a few weeks' time. So for Prem and for the others in 4P10, uh, it's, it's obviously, uh, you're going to hear this twice, so I apologize. But, um, so esports, so I, I'm, I'm very bullish on esports naturally. Uh, you know, I think one of the reasons for that is I'm, I'm younger than some of the SPIMA profs in the program. Uh, but I, you know, I'm a gamer too, you know, I, I actually, and, and I said this the other day as well, so I'm going to be, because I'm a narcissist, as many students know. Uh, I got my PS5 finally, so I'm, I'm pretty stoked about that. Uh, and it took me forever and a day to get it, but I, but I finally did. Um, you know, a lot of people don't get esports. And, um, you know, there are a lot of people, you know, I, Dr. Kerr and I worked on a project for, via Sport BC, it's a, it's sort of like, uh, Sport Ontario, but for BC. And, and we worked on an esports project with them really recently. And Dr. Kerr had mentioned, I'm going to put words in her mouth here. She, she had suggested a while ago that esports wasn't a sport. She, she was on that camp, she didn't see it, she didn't feel it, because she didn't play growing up. And, and it was different, it looked different. And, you know, for me, I grew up playing video games, you know? I, I grew up playing Duck Hunt and Super Mario, I had an NES, I played ice hockey. I'm not sure if any of you, obviously, I'm older than many of you, so I'm not sure if any of you played that game. But, uh, it's, if, if you look on it, uh, sorry, if you look on YouTube, it's ice hockey, it's got like the fat guy, the, the medium guy and the skinny guy. And, uh, Canada wore green jerseys, it was like, it was so stupid. Um, but the Soviet Union was in it, that's how old I am. The Soviet Union was in it. Um, it was the Czechoslovakians, not even the Czech Republic. But anyways, uh, I'm kind of getting off track here. Uh, so I'm very bullish on esports. But remember that a lot of people don't get it, and you might even be one of those people that don't get it. That you don't think it's a sport. And you know what? That's okay. Um, I'm going to rip on a couple of sports here, just for, as an example. I do not care for netball. I'm not sure if anyone here knows about netball, it's, it's, uh, it's a Commonwealth sport. Um, it's pretty much basketball without a back, without a backboard, um, and it's predominantly for females. I think it is one of the stupidest sports we have because we have got basketball. That's my own personal view. Uh, you know, I do rec, I watch, I still watch netball and all that stuff when I was in Australia and all that stuff. But I, I don't think it, it makes sense because we've got basketball. But I can see that it is a sport. The problem is, a lot of people don't think esports is a sport because it looks different. And so this is my own personal perspective that I want to share with you today or tonight. Sport isn't sport because we say it is, okay? Sport is sport because it meets certain criteria. Now, that criteria differs from person to person. But for the vast majority of things that we try to figure out, esports tends to check the box of all the things that traditional sport has. It's got, uh, physicality. Now, it doesn't have a ton of physicality like football, but it's got the same amount of physicality as shooting a gun at the Olympic Games, right? If I'm standing there, play, you know, doing archery, right? You know, I've got a scope now, all I have to do is this. Or if, and for those of you who know about shooting at the Olympic Games, it's literally you've got an air pistol and you'll, you'll, you'll bring down your heart rate and go click. So it's literally the same in terms of the gross motor, or I guess in this case, fine motor skills. So that's one. Number two, it's skillful. Just because I can make a mid-range jump shot doesn't mean that I can make the Toronto Raptors roster tomorrow, right? Just because you, just because I play on a PS5, doesn't mean that tomorrow I'm going to be going up against Ninja in Fortnite, right? So, so that's, that's a, that's a big thing there. Um, so it's skillful, it's physical, it's institutional. There are tournaments, there are teams, there are governing bodies. It's got the, the same structures as traditional sport. The reason why a lot of people rip on esports, for those of you, for those who do not like esports, is because it is the ugly duckling in the pond. But for those of you who know that story of the ugly duckling, the ugly duckling grows up to be a beautiful swan. And esports has that same potential. And we've seen that esports is not a new thing, it's been around for a long, long time. But it has recently come to the forefront because of several things, including younger demographics who now have purchasing and consumer power, right? So for some of you on the call, I'm going to assume all of you have some connection to gaming. Maybe you're not a huge gamer, but maybe you know people, brother, sister, parent, uh, whatever, you know, friend, partner. You, but gaming is becoming more and more important. And for SPIMA students, you know, one of the things, one of the biggest flaws of SPIMA students, um, from my experience is they, they say they want to work in a particular sport. They say, I want to work in hockey, I want to work in basketball, I want to work in football. And I did the exact same thing, I was guilty of that too. Um, when, when I did, when I was doing my research for my masters, I wanted to research mixed martial arts. And so I did my research on UFC, uh, coming to Ontario and stuff back then. SPIMA isn't about any one sport. It's about the business of sport. It's about how to manage sport. You may be, and, and I tell the story all the time. One of my good buddies is a huge Toronto Maple Leafs fan, grew up in Owen Sound. He's now the partnerships manager for the Ottawa Senators. He switched his allegiance, right? Just because we're fans of sports or teams or athletes does not mean we will work in those, uh, organizations or for those athletes or for those leagues or, or sports. You have the capability to work across the industry. You should be known for something like marketing, diversity and inclusion, sponsorship, human resource management, OB, finance, whatever it is, that is your skill. Not, oh, I know how to work in hockey. I, oh, I know how to work in football, oh, I know how to work in esports. So the point of the story is, what you've learned and the, the path that you're now going to take is also applicable to esports, okay? And there is a lot of opportunity there. Um, it's not a ton in Southern Ontario, but there's opportunity across this country and around the world. Esports is huge in Korea, specifically South Korea. It is huge in India, it is huge in places like Poland and Germany. And it's getting bigger in the United States and bigger here in Canada because of things like increased migration from those countries, like South Korea, China, uh, and even Eastern Europe to a lesser extent. So there is opportunity, but you have to be willing to do the work. I think, you know, to, to this, it's not just an esports question, it's a, it's a SPIMA question. Are you willing to do your job, to kind of quote Bill Belichick there for the football fans? It, and, and people will be like, oh, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll do the job, like, I'll do the job. But will you actually? If I, if I ask you a rhetorical question, would you do this job if it was in Toronto? You'd probably say, oh, yeah, 100%, yeah, no, no problem, no problem. But would you do this exact same job if it was in Johannesburg, South Africa? That's the question you need to ask yourself. There will be jobs in the sport industry, but will you be willing to relocate? This is the number one asked question in the United States. When I talk to my colleagues in the US, both in the industry and working as professors, there are students who want to do the same thing. They, they, they were born in Florida, they're like, oh, I don't want to leave Florida, I love Florida. They only know Florida, they don't even own a passport, they've never been outside the state. They just want to work, they want to work for the Florida Gators, that's it, the all end all. Or Tampa Bay Bucks, or Tampa Bay Rays, that's it. Are you willing to move to, uh, Washington DC? Oh, no, 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 I can't do that, I live in Florida. Are you willing to move from Toronto to Winnipeg? Are you willing to move from Toronto to Yukon? Are you willing to move from Toronto to Sackville, Nova Scotia and work at, um, oh man, I'm forgetting the name of the university now, but, um, are you, are you willing to move to Sackville or Wolfville, Nova Scotia? Those are the types of things you need to ask yourself. And so, I certainly wouldn't, uh, limit yourself to one sport or working in two sports. You, you are, if you're a marketer, you're a marketer. If you're a human resource person, you're a human resource person. If you're a sport finance person, you're a sport finance person. And esports is just another sport in our umbrella of sport management that you should be looking to. Now, uh, just really quickly, because I'm sure there's many other questions and I, I'm obviously talking a lot for each question, so I apologize. But, you know, esports is, as you will inevitably experience with other things in the sport industry from this corporate side, very narrow, very streamlined. And so there, while there is opportunity, you know, if, again, you're expecting someone to just hand you a job, it's not going to happen that way. But if you start to think innovatively, creatively, if you start to upscale yourself in certain areas, you can manifest it. It's sort of that old age-old adage, I'm going to make this happen for me, right? But if you, if you take a step back and you're just like, oh, you know what? I went to SPIMA, someone's going to give me a job, it's all good. I'm going to end up, no, something will happen. It's not going to happen. You have to be a little bit more proactive and authentic about it. Um, but yeah, just to go back to this esports thing, yes, 100%, I think esports is a sport. I think, um, everything that you've been taught in your degree is applicable to esports. There are certainly certain things, um, that are, um, nuanced to esports that we won't necessarily have time to get into tonight. But really quickly, I want to mention this too, but, and again, Prem apologies and anyone else in 4P10 that's on this call. Um, it's not just esports though. Esports is a modern version of the sport industry. There is going to be more of this coming through, okay? We grew up thinking that the sports that we had were the only ones. Fifty years ago, 100 years ago, we didn't have those sports. Cricket was the number one sport in this country back in 1905. Before American influence really came up and got rid of, because Americans didn't want cricket, you know, the whole British Empire thing. The, the baseball rounders conversation from the US came up and drove cricket the, the way of the dodo bird. But if you go, one of the oldest sport clubs in the city of Toronto is the Toronto Skating, Curling and Cricket Club, okay? Cricket is very important, cricket died, cricket went away. So we grew up, I grew up in, in the nineties, you, you guys are, and, and girls are growing up. So we grew up, I grew up in in the nineties, you you guys are, and and girls are growing up in the two thousands. Cricket in Canada? Oh, I didn't see it, right? Now cricket's coming back with with avenges because of increased migration, globalization, all those sorts of things. Twenty years from now, we're gonna be like, oh, cricket's not a sport? No, obviously cricket's a sport. When we get three on three basketball seeping into the 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 inner cities and to schools and kids in grade six and grade seven, playing three on three basketball for their school instead of five on five, are we gonna be like, oh, that's not a sport? When we have wheelchair basketball or or wheelchair rugby competitions, are we gonna say that's not a sport? And I know the difference. One's more physical. It seems that way. But believe me, fifty years from now, when we've got virtual headsets and we're thinking in our minds about, you know, okay, I'm on a pitch and and I'm, you know, throwing a ball or you're doing something, but I'm doing it with my mind, are we still gonna have this silly debate of what is it sport or not? So don't be the stupid dinosaurs that have been in the industry and think the way it's been is the way it's always been. The the people who wants to clutch to the traditionalist ways, that's where we do not get innovation, where we do not get growth. That's the stupid conversation that we've been having about why, and and people thinking diversity is not important, why things like esports aren't important. This is the crux. This is the pinnacle where we can start to grow the industry by trying new things. And now that we've got COVID, this is the ultimate period to build the sport industry back better. And the way in which we will do that is by embracing things like esports, diversity, inclusion, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, long-winded answer. I apologize.
No, thank you so much for that. I mean, yeah, I didn't know that much about cricket either until I took your marketing class last year. We talked about it a little bit. So it was interesting to learn. Going back to gaming, I think the most I've done is Mario Kart. That's my favorite game. That's all I can play. But my cousin talks about it all the time. He's a great, great gamer. He makes money, this, that and the third. He talks to me. I have no idea what he's saying. But it seems pretty interesting and I feel like this, and I mean, I've noticed it's definitely become a lot more prominent topic. And I think there's nothing wrong with, if you don't want to get involved with esports, but it's it's nice to get involved in different sports. Like you said, going to Australia was a huge thing for you. And because you learn new skills, you learn about new sports that you didn't realize existed. So I think that's really important. I mean, I talked to an N B A coach and his whole life played football. Until four years ago, suddenly, he's like, this isn't for me, the workouts, the timing, all of this isn't for me, and found a position with the N B A and has loved it ever since. So.
There you go. Perfect example, yeah.
So sometimes it works out. And I mean, I know that you were saying some people don't think esports is a sport along with other areas as well. But I mean, that what that brings in, like we were talking about earlier, different perspectives, different opinions, different debates. So it really drives the the sport industry for sure.
For sure. Just really quickly, before we get to the next question, remember from sport marketing, for all of you who've taken sport marketing, you have to listen to the consumer. If the consumers are telling us that this is what they want, who are we to tell them, oh, you know what? That's not a sport. You you shouldn't be watching that. You should be watching the N F L with Tom Brady going up against Mahomes. That's not our place. If people are watching the W N B A, which they are, and the N W H L and the P W H P A and and women's sport, we shouldn't be saying, oh, women's sports isn't valuable. People are watching this stuff. Let the consumers drive what we do. We are not the custodians. We we did not anoint ourselves the leaders of sport manag, or excuse me, of the sport industry because we have Spema degrees. Our job is to manage sport, not to tell people what sports they should like or not. So if people are watching women's sport, which they are, if people are watching esports, which they are, it is our job to market them. It is our job to manage them. It is not our job to tell people what they should or should not like. So just remember that. You may not like it. You may not understand it. Quite frankly, it doesn't really effing matter. Your job is, I need to facilitate this because people want it. And my job is to sell it to them and manage it appropriately.
Yeah, exactly. And like you were saying, sport management doesn't mean one, one job, one sport. So many different areas as well. So I appreciate that comment. Their next question is, what are some methods you think students should use to find their niche within the sports industry?
Ooh, yeah, that's a that's an excellent question. And I had, they've all been really good tonight. Yes, so with that one, it is, you know, the first step is you have to think about your personality. You know, there there are some great, you know, personality quizzes and profiling tests that you can do to figure out, you know, what it is that you're interested about. You know, sometimes you take a class with someone who rambles on and on and on and you figure it out. And you're like, you know what? That thing that Professor Nureyin was saying, I actually like it, even though he just keeps talking for hours and hours and hours. And then sometimes you're like, you know what? You know, now that I've taken that class, it's not exactly what I was thinking about. And and so that's a great point of discovery. But another thing that you can do is, again, tap into what it is about your personality that gets you going. You know, one of the reasons why I'm so interested in sport marketing and this business development side of things is, and it sounds really weird and off, but and crazy, but just hear me out. I love merch. When when I, when I, when my students go out in the future, and 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 I can tell you right now, the ones from Australia will tell you, you know, the first thing I'll, when they're like, hey, Mike, do you want to come to a game? I'm like, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, sure, whatever. And I I love seeing them, you know, working in action. It's amazing. I get a lot of pride out of that. But then I'm like, so, you know, you got that new hat for me? You got you got that new shirt for me? I'm really, I'm really big on merch and I always wanted to understand how, you know, that's that sales, uh, marketing side of the industry. I I I wanted to be innovative. I wanted to understand how we could grow our businesses further. And I wanted to understand why I wanted to have those jerseys. What was it about the jersey or the scarf or the hat or the shoes? And, you know, certainly there are there are people like my my shoe game is terrible, like I I not on the sneakers app or anything like that. I'm not collecting sneaks, but like, there are others who are far further down the line than I am, but I tapped into my personality of wanting to be ambitious, of wanting to be innovative. And that not only fueled my experience in the industry, working for the firms that I that I did, both, you know, whether it's university or BlackBerry, Samsung, those types of firms, but it also fuels my current research. So for you all listening to this, you have to think about what gets you up in the morning. And more importantly, what, and this is gonna sound really crazy, what keeps you up at night? What will be the thing that you always go back to and you're just like, I want to fix this? Why is this like this? Or I love this. I can't get enough of this, right? And it's, I know, you know, you've been conditioned to not think about that way when it comes to school stuff. You know, you're you're, you know, what keeps you up at night or what you love is, I love my P S five controller. I love my 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 phone. For me, ten years ago was my BlackBerry. I can't really say that now, but I I love my Crackberry. I love my iPhone. I love my my I G account. I love, you know, going on to Discord, talking to people. That, those are the fun hobby stuff. But now start to think about what you've learned in your degree. What is the one thing that if you had your eyes closed gun to your head, that you could like, listen to this professor ramble on for weeks and weeks and weeks? You can't get enough of that S, right? Like, 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 you know what I'm talking about? That's where you can start to build out your niche. And a part of that as well, I talked about this before, Madeline in Brooklyn, is think seven years from now. What, where do you see yourself? And and we all did that goofy thing in high school where you had that action plan in grade nine. And then, okay, in grade ten and eleven, these are the courses I'm gonna take. It's gonna fuel, here's my map. I take this class now. I take this class. I take this class. It's the same thing. I would implore all of you to literally just take a blank white sheet of paper, like printer paper, and map it out. Seven years from now, this is where I would like to be. And then work backwards, okay? What do I need to be doing? Who do I need to connect with? What types of relationships do I need to have? And, you know, and building out your niche is not a difficult thing. The difficulty lies with, do you think you're doing the right thing? Remember, or like, are you choosing the right niche? Remember that people will change careers, right? Like, you you're allowed to pivot. Nothing, you know, you might go into the industry and then three years from now, you're like, you know what? I hate H R. I don't want to do H R, people and culture ever again. I want to be a marketer now. Or you might start off as a marketer and you're like, I hate, you know, selling people lies. I want to be more of a people person. I want to be people and culture, diversity, equity and inclusion. You're allowed to switch. You're allowed to change your mind, okay? So I just want to make that very clear. I started off in facilitating event management. I worked at the Rogers Centre for four years. Then I worked in retail. I worked my way up that chain. I also pivoted and moved towards digital. You're allowed to do that. No one's gonna hold like, be like, oh, my gosh, that's that's complete no-no. You're allowed to switch your ideas if your personalities change, which they will, right? People do change. You do adapt. You do learn new things. But so just remember, just because you choose it now and you start to work towards that goal, it doesn't mean that you can't pivot later. But remember that you do need to start picking a lane and start to to specialize in a particular area. And the way in which you get there is by, you gotta suss it out. You gotta go through that path of discovery. Dig down deeper into the rabbit holes. Read a new article. Read, make a new friend who's in that area. Talk them up. Be friends with them. And I'm gonna connect this with something else I want to say really quickly. When we're talking about relationships, you know, one of the, one of the things I was I was mentioning off the top today, don't just connect with people on LinkedIn, like, connect with people. Or whether it's new things like Clubhouse, whether it's new things like, maybe not Dispo, but like some of this other random stuff that's coming through these days. Genuine relationships. I would rather you have five really good connections than five hundred, okay? And think about it like, to 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 bring in a basketball example for you here, Brooklyn, like, your starting five. Who's your point guard? Who's your shooting guard? Who's your rebounder? Who's your, who's your stretch four? Who's gonna be the one that you can go to to cry on? Who's who's shoulder can you go to? Who's the one you're gonna be messaging on WhatsApp or Twitter or D M ing on on I G? Who's that person? Who's the person that's gonna rebound, that 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 will give you, when when there's a job opening, they're always sending you stuff? You know, oh, hey, so and so, have you looked at this? Have you looked at this? Have you looked at this? Who's your go-to person for sending you and sharing jobs with you? Who's the person that you can vent with? That isn't just the shoulder you can cry on, but the person that you can go and be like, oh, man, like, Professor Nureyin sucks. Like, he's the worst. Like, who's who's the person that you can vent to? You need to build a starting five in the same way that a Messiah Ujiri would build his starting five to make it to the ship. You need to think about that for your networks and make it authentic. Don't just connect with people randomly. This is very much a part of what niche are you gonna go down? To just bring, circle back to the question, because you're not gonna necessarily choose randos. You might want to choose people in the same niche that you're also in, right? And just really quickly, it's it's not a competition. I know it may seem like that, but all tides will rise if we row together. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. So if Brooklyn gets a job, we will celebrate that. That that doesn't mean that Madeline now is gonna be, oh, my gosh, that's a job that I went out for. Now I'm stuck and I'm I'm screwed for life. No, it's not about that. We will grow together if we build authentic relationships with one another. But if we continue to think, okay, it's just a numbers game. I'm gonna connect with a bunch of randos on LinkedIn. I've never actually met this person in real life. I've met them once at a conference or on a town hall or you name it, and then just random throw out a connection on LinkedIn. Okay, now what? Now's the time to use it to cultivate those relationships and develop your niche. So if you want to be known for something, you have to put in the work. And so again, circling it, it all it all comes back full circle to this niche question. Start to actively think, how can I not only choose my niche, but how can I build towards it? What kind of relationships can I build to to make that happen as well?
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that response. I think that's definitely something that us as Spema students think about a lot. You know, we're kind of, we have all these courses that we have to take to graduate, to get our degree. But, you know, there are also options to kind of start to choose your niche and stuff. And I don't, I don't know about everyone else, but I know me personally, I'm still very, you know, I want to try a little bit of this, try a little bit of that. But definitely great advice to take. So thank you for that. So that was all the questions that we had submitted from everyone. So thank you for those. So now we'll kind of move towards discussion if anyone has any questions from what Professor Nureyin kind of just brought up in all his answers. So raise your hand or send in the chat if you'd like. We'll give a couple of minutes, maybe if people want to think. Yeah, Evan, go ahead. And then we'll go to Prem afterwards.
Hi, Professor Nureyin. Good to see you again.
Hey, Evan. Yeah, good to see you, man.
I just wanted to start off, I figured that I'd get the ball rolling just on be more personal, like you talked about at the start. So we haven't had you in person since sport bargaining. So I wanted to ask, what do you watch on Netflix right now?
Ah, yeah, excellent question. I was I was waiting for someone to ask. So on Netflix right now, I actually, so my partner and I just finished Unorthodox. I'm not sure if anyone's seen it or heard of it. It's it's like up for a bunch of Emmys. It is, it's only four episodes, so it's reasonable. Really, really good. I personally did not know too much about the Yiddish community. And but besides, you know, driving up and down Bathurst Street in Toronto, for those of you who know, there are strong Yiddish communities, you know, in that Bathurst, St. Anglantian, Bathurst, St. Lawrence area. And yeah, so Unorthodox was great. Before that, though, I've I've got a couple here, Evan. So I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you three. It's been a while. Okay, so the first is Unorthodox. The second one is Singapore Social. So I'm not sure if anyone here has been to Singapore. I'm gonna assume not. But if you have, again, like bonus points. Singapore is amazing, first of all. If if any seafood fans out there, the chili crab, like unreal. And spicy chili crab at that. Singapore is unreal. And even the McDonald's there, like they got some good stuff at McDonald's. But so Singapore Social is pretty much like the Hills. No, sorry, you guys are younger. It's like, what do we watch on T, um, how do I put this? It's like Love is Blind, I guess. I mean, it's a reality show. It's 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 good. All right, just just watch it. It's good. Singapore Social and there was one based in L A. It's escaping me right now. I want, it's it's like Crazy Rich Asians, but real life. Hold on, let me just look it up really quickly. Netflix, real life.
Is it Bling Empire?
Yes, it is Bling Empire. Yes, yes.
I haven't watched it yet, but it's on my watch list.
It's so good. It's so good. I I don't want to spoil anything, but they're really rich. Like, it's super rich. So, yeah, those are my top three. But, yeah, thank you for asking because, yeah, I miss telling you what I'm watching on Netflix every week.
Perfect. Thank you for the answer.
No worries.
Okay, so Prem had a question. I'll also just hop in there. I also watched Unorthodox and I thought that was really interesting. I I am Jewish, but not part of that specific, you know, Orthodox Jewish community. So even for me, it was really interesting to learn and to see all that. And as Ethan said, it was really interesting and they could have gone more and, you know, kind of extended that story there. But, yeah, but Prem, go ahead if you have your question.
Yeah, no, I definitely have to check these shows out. Unorthodox sounds pretty interesting. I'll definitely check that out. So I guess this is more of a personal question. In terms of working abroad, I was a little curious how that like opportunity came to you and what kind of motivated you to go to Australia in like your first ever like professional job? Like, how did that come to you?
Yeah, sure. It's a great question, Prem. So so it it wasn't my first professional job. It was my first academic, like, like professor job. So I, just 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 to make that clear, but
Yeah.
um, and and so just really quickly, I I and I know, so again, thank you all for taking your time this evening to to be on the call. I know, like, I'm keeping away from hockey and all these other things going on tonight. But it's Thursday. It's 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 N B A on T N T here. So the the true story is, I was literally crying in my office. I had never been to Australia in my life. I had been offered the job. My partner, she had been to Australia before. So she was like, oh, yeah, let's go. Like, we can do this. And I I literally, same thing. Southern Ontario, greatest place in the world, right? Like, why would we want to leave here? But you realize, once you leave this place, you not only will you appreciate it more in the long run, which is why I'm back, but you will appreciate the fact that there's so much more to the world than the four oh one. Believe me when I say this. There's so much more. No one in the world gives a flying F about the World Junior Ice Hockey Team and and Ice Hockey Tournament, but this country. And that is proof of the fact that when you go to a place like Australia and you're like, wow, they play Australian Rules Football. Like, that's so weird. But the way that they grow up loving it is the same way that we grow up loving the World Juniors. And that makes you appreciate what you have grown up with so much more. And so And so so to go back to your specific question, Prem, the the reason why I wanted to go was uh because like for many of you, I needed a job. Uh, at that time, I was, you know, becoming a fully fledged, a full fully fledged professor. And I wanted to experience, this was the perfect opportunity. I don't, my partner and I don't have kids. Uh, we we didn't have a mortgage. Um, we we owned really shitty Honda Civics and Honda Element cars. So so we didn't, we didn't have like car payments or anything like that. This, it was the perfect time. I'm gonna make a massive assumption that many of the people listening to this call don't have some of those things that uh and and don't for if any of you have some of these variables, I I'm not putting anyone down. But things that might encumber individuals and prevent them from doing some of these things. We all have life things. We might need to be able, we might have to take care of our parents. We might have uh physical uh um abilities or or inabilities. Um. We all have things going on in our lives that might constrain our abilities to do things. But if given the opportunity, you have to seize it. Whether it's in the GTA, the GTHA Niagara, Windsor Essex, or outside of this province, outside of this country, there are opportunities. And so it comes back to what I was talking about before. Are you willing to seize them when given the opportunity? Okay? And it it's hard for some people to reconcile with. So so like I said, Prem, it's really hard. It and it and you you're also going up against the FEMA kids in those countries, right? I had a kid who came to me um recently in our program here, who uh, sorry, I shouldn't say kid, but a student, who who said, you know, I would like to work in Europe. That is a very admirable certainly thing to do. It's not every day that someone says, you know what, I wanna work in Germany or or England or or France. And and it's an uphill battle, but it's an uphill battle here as it is there. And so work towards that. Think about upskilling yourself. Think about doing a certificate or a master's program. If you wanna work in the States, you know, I I, you know, if you wanna work for a sport marketing agency in Miami, Florida, go, you know, work for, you know, d- d- go, go to them, you know, work for them. Go, go, li- literally go up and move and go to Florida. The story that I really, and I know I'm taking up a lot of time here, but the story I wanna tell, do we have any baseball fans on the call? A- a- any baseball fans? Blue Ja- Blue Jays? Any Blue Jays fans? Okay, some? Okay. All right. Um. Well, we could talk about Kyle Dubas in a second, but I'm I'm gonna use a different example. So I'm not sure, so it doesn't seem like there's a bunch of Blue Jays fans on the call. But there's a general manager in Major League Baseball. His name is Alex Anthopoulos. Does anyone know who Alex Anthopoulos is? Okay, a couple shaking heads. Okay, Alex was the GM of the Blue Jays. Now he's the GM of the Atlanta Braves. Alex went to McMaster. He is from Southern Ontario, okay? And and this comes, I'm using America as going abroad, but this extends to the rest of the world, Prem, and to everyone else. Alex did his, I believe, his Bachelor's of uh Accounting or Finance or some something at Mc- at Mac. Um, and he has friends, he was friends with Andrew Tenisch, uh who's was an alumni of our program. He's friends with Jess Dixon, who's one of the the founders of Brock Baseball back in two thousand uh, yeah, two thousand, two thousand eight, I think. Point of the story is Alex wanted to work in baseball. But he realized that, you know what, staying in Toronto was not going to be the best thing for him. Alex took his broke ass car and drove down to Florida. He didn't work for anybody. He worked for free. He slept in his car. And he would go to spring training games and other A-League Grapefruit League games. And he would go to the bleachers and he would sit in the stands and he would do up the scouting reports. And he would try to offer them to anyone who would take them. He literally did that for multiple seasons. He slept in his car. He ate a bunch of garbage junk food at the at the diners, at the parks. But eventually, someone realized, oh, you know what? You 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 make sense. I like what you're, I like what you're offering here. This makes sense. The the way that you're scouting people, the way that you're analyzing the game, I like the cut of your jig. That is what you have to do if you want to make it happen. It's about being proactive. I'm literally telling you a story of a dude who slept in his car and now makes seven figures a year, okay? It is possible, but you have to be willing to go where the work is or to show, go to the places where people are that you wanna show them. So if you wanna work in esports, as an example, picking up and moving to Los Angeles, moving to San Francisco, moving to Frisco, Texas, those are strong options. Moving to South Korea is kind of maybe a crazier example. But if you wanna work for in cricket, moving to Dubai, moving to India, moving to Australia, those are things that make sense. If you wanna work in hockey, yeah, you know what, being in Canada might be the best thing, but maybe moving to Minnesota. Maybe moving to places around the world that need upskilled development in hockey. I've got a good buddy of mine who lives in Taiwan. He's from Fergus, Ontario. He lives in Taiwan and he ain't coming back because he teaches hockey to kids in Taiwan. And he also plays, he's he's like seventy pro now in Taiwan. It's it's crazy. I can name, I can, I can also, there's so many stories. I wish we had like way more time, but I don't wanna kill your evenings. I could name you so many different stories of people who grew up in the same places that you did, but have tried something different. When I was in Australia, Prem, I met guys and 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 gals from Ohio, from Texas, from California, from Germany, from England, from South Africa. Um, and and it's part of that is South Africa, oh, sorry, part of that is Australia is very global. It's an island literally in the middle of nowhere. But we've thought, we we pride ourselves as Canadians as being, we're the most multicultural country in the world, right? But there's so many other countries that have that that say the exact same thing. What when and when people were asking me, you know, what what was the reason you would come to Australia? I said, that is the part of the world where there's the most amount of growth right now, right? The NBA wants to go to China. Major League Baseball wants to go to Austria. And the NFL has games in Sydney, Australia, right? If you if you look at some of the, a lot of the NFL players, they're ex rugby or 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 uh AFL footy players that are punters now in uh in the NFL. The NFL has games in Asia. Major League Baseball had the Red Sox Yankees played in Japan, if I'm not mistaken, right? Um, what what else am I missing here? Manchester United goes to China. These teams go, they're going all over the world. Why wouldn't we? And and just really quickly, and then we can move on to the next question, if there's if there's any, I know I'm talking a lot here. But one kid asked me and and he said, this was a couple of years ago, and he said, Professor, my goal and my dream would be to work for the NBA. I wanna work for the NBA offices in New York. And I said, that's awesome. Love that journey for you. And he's like, okay, but how do I get there? And I said, think about all the people who are trying, when there's a job posting an internship at the NBA offices in New York. Literally, probably our entire program is gonna apply to that, right? If you've seen internship at the at the NBA offices in New York City, oh, my gosh, like I get to, I get to work in New York City. But how many people, when there's an internship posting at the NBA office in Shanghai? And if for the student, the student spoke Cantonese and Mandarin. If there is an internship at the NBA offices in Shanghai, how many FEMA students at Brock are gonna apply to that? Again, rhetorical question, but just think about that for a second. If there is an NHL internship in Beijing, there is a reason, and I'm gonna say this really quickly. I know I'm on my high horse here, you know, I tend to do this. But there is a reason why the NHL didn't go to Pyeongchang in twenty eighteen and why Team Canada didn't win gold. And we ended up like fourth or fifth or who who the heck knows? The only guy I can think of who was on the team was Wojciech Wolfski. Um, but there's a reason why in twenty twenty-two, the NHL will be of NHL players, we will see Sidney Crosby, Nathan McKinnon, Connor McDavid play for Team Canada. And we will see Sarah Nurse, uh and and you know, all those all those great folks playing for for the women's team. It's because the Chinese market is so important, right? We're not saying, are we talking about expanding to Quebec City right now? No. But are we talking about growing the game in China? Yes. So when you ask me the question, Prem, why did I wanna go abroad? It's because that is where the opportunities lie. Don't think to yourself, okay, as to to keep with hockey, I'm gonna bank on the fact that hockey will come back to Quebec City. It might, it might not. But I can tell you right now that growing the game in India and in China and in South Korea, well, maybe not South Korea, but in China is definitely number one on the radar of the NHL. And that's why you're gonna see NHLers in twenty twenty-two. And that is why all of you listening to this synchronously or asynchronously should look not just in Southern Ontario, but outside of this province, outside of this country. Do not limit yourself. The world is literally your oyster. The only thing that will limit you is your, and again, there's obviously other factors here. I'm kind of boiling it down to a simp- a simple fact, which it's not. I understand that. But if you've got the opportunity, if you don't have some of those things that might encumber you, take a leap. It will be the greatest thing you ever do, believe me.
Thank you for that. It was a nice little pep talk at the end. I appreciate that. Oh, uh, but it's so true.
You know, I'm good for it. You know, I'm good.
Yeah, I know. I'm used to it. I love it. Um, so actually, I like the story that you mentioned because I remember that story. I just had no idea who it was. I never had got the name of it, so um I'm I'm glad I got to know who that is now. But um it's true, though, there's so much to the world that people don't realize. I mean, I know for myself going to North Carolina, and I'm sure Ethan can attest to it too, like completely different, so different, the sport culture. I've learned so much. Uh, I mean, I knew it was different, but being there live was so different. Being on the court, watching a D-one school practice, like whole different world. Um, so it's true. And I mean, and that was in the US. And like you said, there's so many other countries um out there to be a part of. And just like the NBA wants to expand, there's so many opportunities to to get those positions. So definitely agree with that. Um, I do have a question, but I'm gonna just wait a second and make sure that everyone, see if anyone else has any questions first. Um, yeah.
And actually, be- be- before you answer that, I'll I'll let it fester with with the others. But I also wanna make another controversial statement. Um, going back to Prem's question, twenty years from now, you will see, and so you you write it down right now, and then twenty years from now, you can come back to me and and tell me if I was right or wrong. There will be an NFL team in London, England, whether full time or or part time. And you will see Major League Baseball play more games in England. And maybe that's not necessarily controversial, but you'll see more regular season games in England as well. That, there's a reason why. London is only five hours away from New York City. It's it's pretty much the West Coast uh difference, right? When you think about going from New York to LA or Toronto to Vancouver, so or or even Halifax, Newfoundland to Vancouver. You will see teams in England in the future, in from North American leagues. And you will see perhaps in the grand future, some sort of super league between, you know, the top basketball team in the NBA goes up against the top basketball team. Like, maybe we have NBA games in Europe and we have like a Euro division. Don't be surprised to see that kind of stuff. And that's the importance of internationalizing yourself now. Get in while the opportunity is there. Think about not just what's in front of you, but what is, where's the clearing beyond the forest? Um, actually, another really quick thing that I've been watching, Little Fires Everywhere on Amazon, that's pretty good, too. Don't just look at the fire right in front of you. Think about all of the the other fires going on. If you just look with the blinders on, you're gonna be stuck in with all the other nine hundred and ninety-nine FEMA students. But if you open your eyes, you'll see there's a whole world out there and you can get in on it before the others do.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that. Um, so since there's no hands up, I'll just go ahead and ask my question. It's just really a quick, short, little question. Um, I know you always ask the guest lecturers what keeps them up at night. So Professor Nurein, what keeps you up at night?
Oh, boy. Um, it's just twist twisting my words against me here. Um, what keeps me up at night? Uh, besides students hating, absolutely hating me, um. No, i- i- in all seriousness, um, make making my students better uh is is certainly one thing that keeps me up at night. And again, and and you know this, like I joke about it and and it's true. I am very polarizing and I know that, but there's, I I know that at the end of the day, this will be the thing that pushes all of you to be the best version of yourself. And some people are willing to take on that challenge and some people are not, but I will own that. I will always own that to say, I will be the one that will push you. I don't, I'm not gonna be the one that's gonna be like, okay, check mark, here's your ninety-five percent, and then have you go off and then, you know, know absolutely nothing. I'd rather you have, you know, and I know you, a lot of students don't wanna hear this, but the marks that you get here honestly mean absolutely nothing. They mean nothing, right? It's more, that's intrinsic to you, that you think the higher mark that you get, the better sport manager that you will be ultimately become. Believe me when I say no one in the sport industry cares whether you got a ninety-five or an eighty-three, okay? They do not. Unequivocally, they do not. No one, no one's gonna have a job interview with you and say, show me your transcript. They instead wanna see what you can do for them, which is why one of the things that keeps me up at night, like I said, is making my students better, is creating projects and assignments that students will be able to show in their job interviews and say, look at what I can do for you. Um, so take your assignments, not just with me, but with all other profs in FEMA, seriously. Because you might not think that they are worthwhile, but if you do a good job on it, you put effort and you are authentic about it, show that in your job interviews, whether it's on Zoom or in person. Show them what you can do, that you're more than just words on a piece of paper, that being your CV, that you can actually do a marketing plan, that you can create an innovative partnership proposal, that you can, you know, talk about new tools like blockchain, artificial intelligence and virtual reality. So that's the first thing that keeps me up at night. And then, um, oh, the the other thing that keeps me up at night is I, you know, my personality is very driven and ambitious, as as I'm sure many of you could probably already tell. Um, I I wanna be the, I I wanna make sure that, so in in terms of students better preparing you for the next level, the 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 other thing, I guess, something that keeps me up at night is what will be the next thing that comes down the pipeline that students need to know about, right? As I talked about earlier, you know, we're teaching FEMA the same way it's been taught for the past twenty, thirty years. It sucks, honestly. I I I will, I'll say it to any other professor who's been in the FEMA program uh for many, many years. Uh, and I have I have no problems, no qualms telling them, we are not doing what as good a job as we can. We need to do better. And that's what keeps me up at night. And that's why, you know, in some of my classes, talking about the things that are happening right now in the industry, the death of sponsorship and the rise of partnership, blockchain, AI, esports, VR, um, you know, talking about content curation, creative design. How can we and how can I unpack those cutting edge research things that I'm doing to provide you with the skills and the knowledge as students to take it a- and grab on to? Um, and as I continue to ramble here, I guess the last thing I'll say is, you know, one of the things that keeps me up at night is how can I make sure that students get the pep talks that I'm trying to give them? Like, I don't just ramble on because I like to hear myself talk. It's because I'm trying to get across a certain point. And sometimes it takes me longer to make those points than others, or sometimes I beat that dead horse till it till it can't, you know, uh till it just evaporates. But at the end of the day, I really, really, really think about how can students grasp what I'm trying to put out there. Um, and sometimes it goes really well and sometimes it doesn't go so well. But like I said, um, Brooklyn, at the end of the day, I will one hundred percent always, always, always own who I am, which is, I will be the tough one. But I know five years from now, when you're in the industry, you come back and tell me, you know what? Professor, your class was the hardest and I hated your guts. But damn, that was the best class that I ever had because it prepared me for this next level. And that is what I love to hear, that I challenge you to be the best possible versions of yourself. And so do not think that four years at FEMA is just an exercise in in futility. There is purpose behind what you're doing here. Sometimes you might find a professor or a TA that's phoning it in. You will never get that from me. I will always be one hundred percent top notch, pushing you to be the best version of yourselves. Just from, and and other professors will be as well. Just remember, we're waiting for you to grab the olive branch back, okay? So that's that, surely that's keeping a lot of other professors up at night, but that's definitely what keeps me up at night.
Yeah, thank you for that response. Um, it's true. I mean, hard work pays off. It's nice to know that uh when we complete a very well thought out and um assignment, just like the marketing plans, for example. If you walk into an interview, it's nice to have that and show this is what I can offer basically and have it right in front of their face. So it's it's nice to have that option as well. Um, and I hope this helps you sleep soundly tonight, but I definitely learned a lot in your sponsorship class. Um, I really pushed myself out of the comfort zone. Uh, definitely was. Uh, and definitely was because of you. So hopefully that helps a little bit. Um, but I do appreciate that because I mean, I learned something about myself that I wasn't expecting. I never thought I would be interested in sponsorship or thought I would, you know, succeed and ended up doing really well and learned a lot. So hopefully that helps you tonight, uh, and you'll get a good night's sleep.
No, I appreciate that. No, listen, I, you know, for the people listening to this like live and uh, asynchronously, you're doing the first step, right? You're, you're, you're taking advantage of the opportunities. But you know, I throw a lot at you tonight. There's a lot going on, but remember that, um, you know, if, if there is, you know, tho- those three things I talked off, off the top, they're, they're very important. And so take some intro spec, oh, sorry, sorry. Take some time to digest what we've unpacked tonight. Um, you know, obviously there's a lot of rambling going on here, but it's very important that you don't just seize these opportunities. Like, oh, okay, Professor Noreen's talking about a bunch, about a bunch, all these cool buzzwords and all these things, yeah, yeah, yeah. But what's gonna be your next steps forward? What are you actively gonna be doing to make change in your own personal behaviors? Are you gonna stop randomly adding people on LinkedIn and hoping that's gonna make a change? Uh, or sorry, that's, that's gonna make a difference for you? Or better yet, instead of, and I do this, this is really savage, but um, a couple of years ago, someone told me, whenever you see someone on your Facebook, um, and it's their birthday and you're like, oh, you know what, I, this is the perfect opportunity to defriend them, uh, is, is to use their birthdays. I, I'm starting to now do that with LinkedIn. Because, you know, people have added me just randomly, I, I, like, no joke, I, I'm, I'm just gonna spend a quick ten seconds here talking about this. Someone tried to add me yesterday just to sell me her matchmaking services. She, she knows nothing about me. She's got like twenty connections. She doesn't know that I have a partner. Like, it ma- it makes no sense. But that's where we've become as a society that, okay, if I just connect, 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 I can use this as a sales tool. Remember, like, be authentic, make, think about your own, your own selves and what you can do to make yourselves that much better, be the best possible versions of yourself. But you know, honestly, i- if, if anyone here has any questions, obviously you know I like to talk, which is one of the reasons you invited me. But I'm always open and happy and willing to, to chat with any one of you. Uh, I know, I've had a lot of conversations with many of you already. Um, but if there's anything now in the future, happy to chat and, uh, but I just want to thank you for listening to me tonight. Uh, but just remember about all the various different things we talked about and start to think about how you are gonna start making changes for your journeys as you go forward.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much. Um, though, I think we're gonna end it here, but thank you so much for all the wonderful questions we got previously and tonight. And Professor Noreen, of course, thank you for coming on and chatting and all of your wonderful answers. We truly appreciate it. Um, so thank you and thank you for everyone participating tonight.
Again, thanks so much for having me. And um, yeah, let's, let's go enjoy some basketball or whatever else is on TV tonight. Some Bling Empire. Bling, bling, bling empire.
Bling Empire. It's in my notes. I have it done. All right. Thank you so much, everyone. I hope everyone has a great night.